Well, good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, July 21st, 2025. We are here this morning for a work session and our discussion item is community planning, infrastructure, and resource performance measures. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners with Mayor Miffla, Commissioners, Commissioner John Kavales and Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally. We have our county manager with us, Lorinda Volker, and I'm going to turn things over to Julie Elser from the Department of Performance, Budget, and Strategy. We have a lot of folks in the room, so welcome to everyone who's here, and I'll let people introduce themselves as they introduce their topic.
Thanks. I'm Julie Elser, Data Program Manager. Today is the second in our annual performance measures series. Today, we're having Community Planning, Infrastructure and Resources Service Area present. So just a quick reminder, these are performance measures that these departments have selected to present, and I just want to remind of the difference between performance measures and community indicators because we have some of both. So, performance measures are also sometimes known as KPIs or key performance indicators, and they often have a goal associated with them that these departments are working towards. There are a few community indicators scattered amongst these presentations, and these are metrics that the departments track because they might have to respond to them or use them in decision-making, but they're not metrics that they can actually control, so there's no goal associated with those. So we have six departments and we have about 90 minutes, so we'll try to stay under 15 minutes per department, and we'll just go alphabetically down the list, and we will begin with community development.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. I'll highlight our performance measures, and then I have a few other slides with some additional data representing some of those community indicators or just trends that we're seeing in community development that then influence county revenues and other considerations that I want to share. So, as in years past, we have not made any changes to our performance measures. We do intend to make some changes to performance measures as part of the objective team that Julie is leading on the county's strategic plan. So we're working through that process now to determine whether we have the right measures to really effectively determine how we're doing our work. The first measure on the left on this chart, you may remember from previous years, is the percentage of building inspect requests that we honor within one day or within 24 hours. There's no change year-over-year really for us. We are still sitting close to 100%. We're at 99% there. That metric really only shifts when we start to see staffing shortages. We're adequately staffed at the moment, but if that changes in the future, that's when we would see a change. The two metrics in the middle show our time in process for both building permits and planning cases. The caveats I'll give with these two charts is they focus on a very specific type of building permit and a specific type of planning case, and they really only capture those permits or plans that were both submitted and completed within the same year. So I would say this is not a perfectly representative metric for us right now. This is one what we want to make some changes in the future, but for the sake of showing some trend information, we didn't want to mess with it too much yet until we know for sure what direction we want ahead. The chart on the top shows the average number of days that a building permit is in county hands, and we are improving on this metric and had it down to an average of 12 days in 2024, which is really excellent. That's far below our goal of 25 days. On the planning side, the chart below shows the average number of days that a land division application is in county hands. On that metric, we've kind of bounced up above and below our target over the past several years. The average last year was above our goal of 150 days and sitting at 167. But again, this doesn't capture those land division applications that may have started in 2023 or carried over or may still be in progress now, so it really is a snapshot with only a few data points really in that chart. So, again, we'd like to come up with a better metric that really more closely represents the work we're doing, but it is something that we're monitoring, that we see that that number has spiked back up last year. The final chart on this page is the percentage of code compliance cases closed in the past year, and that is a percentage of how many were opened and how many were closed, just sort of simply divided between each other. So we are consistent with 2023. We were at 63% of the cases opened were closed in 2024. So if I could borrow the cable here, I have a couple more slides I want to show you related to building activity levels, planning activity levels, and revenues. So on the planning side, the number of cases, this is just a 10-year look back that shows that the number of planning cases since 2021 has started to decline or continued to decline, and we were sitting just above 200 applications. The volume doesn't always illustrate the complexity of the applications and the amount of work, so a quick snapshot of the applications by case type. So you'll see our top application in volume last year was variances, followed by site plan reviews, admin special reviews. A couple trends, we had double the number last year of site plan reviews and appeals as we had in the prior year, but about half as many special reviews, lot consolidations, amended plots, and administrative special reviews. Some of that can be accounted for in the code changes related to short-term rentals and what processes those short-term rentals are going through. But if you're interested in digging in a little bit more, I'd be happy to share more data behind what changes we're seeing in trends and types of applications. We did see several more 1041 permits in 2024 than we did in 2023. As you know, those can be fairly time-consuming, but there were several other project types that remained pretty constant year-over-year. Building activity levels from 2014 to 2024, we were concerned that there may have been a downward trend starting in 2023, and we're very closely monitoring activity levels and revenues, and then we saw it spike back up pretty significantly in 2024. We are closely monitoring in 2025 with tariffs and other external influences on the market, but we are still seeing strong building permit activity levels. Some of those activity levels are associated with county facilities and county departments that are coming through our building permit process as well for emergency services, campus, and other county facilities. And then the last slide I want to share relates to the building revenues and forecasted revenues for 2026. So our revenues over time from 2017 to 2024 have continued to increase. Again, we saw a dip down in 2023, and we started to get concerned, but our revenues rebounded strongly last year. Julie's team in Performance, Budget, and Strategy has developed a mechanism for us to more accurately forecast our building revenues based on other indicators in the market and have explored vacancy rates, interest rates, other data that we can source to determine what can most accurately predict, or historically what has most accurately predicted our revenues. And that's how we've developed some scenarios, a low, mid, and high scenario for revenue for 2026. And this is information that is feeding into the county's budget process as well. So that wraps up county, our community development, and welcome any discussion or questions you may have for me.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thanks, ma'am chair, and I apologize. I was coming in the building early, and then some people stopped me right outside the elevator. I had lots of questions, so I wasn't paying attention at the time because I started talking away. My first question is back a slide if you have one more. Forward again, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to think of this question. So when we look at building activity, that's everything, right? So it could be a pole barn, it could be an ADU, it could be, it may not be always new homes.
Correct.
So is that something we should look at for metric-wise? Because I'm wondering, sometimes it's quicker and easier to do like a farming agricultural pole barn or accessory, and what that looks like to kind of see how the agricultural sector is doing, and then also, you know, since we're tracking housing and affordable housing, is that something we can just look at ease of days going through quickly since that's something that we're being critiqued on statewide? So I'm just curious about that. So that's my first question.
Yes, so one of the reasons we include both total building permits and plan reviews on this slide is those plan reviews account for the permits that are commercial and residential and have a lot more of interaction with staff. Some of the smaller things like, you know, HVAC and sometimes decks and things like that may not be fully accounted for in the plan review, so we do monitor that. I think it's a great point that breaking out commercial, residential, and then some of those more utility permits or things that may not be as substantive would be helpful to visualize where our trends are. Going back to this metric here, the one on the top in the middle on building permits, that's specifically residential building permits, so that does show the speed that a new home or a home addition or basement finish might be going through the process. So we are seeing improvement there in how quickly we're getting to residential permits.
So that was a question I had. That 12 is quite impressive. Is that across the region or state or country? Is that a, you know, we always hear about, oh, it's taken so long and delays, but that's 12 days is a pretty quick turnaround, so I'm wondering, is that an exemplar or is it something that you, is it just because building permits are also down? I mean, how do we evaluate all of that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't have an answer to it, but I will say that Julie is actually helping to lead a work session workshop coming up relatively soon to start to look across the region at different community development metrics and see what types of metrics might be good to share and track to provide a little bit better benchmarking for all of our local communities. So I don't have a great comparison right now based on any data, but we are hoping to get to that point in the near future.
Excellent, and if, ma'am chair, my last question for right now. The slide with all the different, the variances and SDR, the other one, I saw the wireless existing facility one, and I had met, I was Friday, I was down at Denver with Bronstein and all of them, and Mr. Feldman helped, I guess, write, does that ring a bell for people, had helped write our TELC, our wireless group. He is very proud of that. I'm just curious, is that 18, I guess I didn't realize we had so much activity in that area. Can you, is that something that's just for now, or is that just a consistent?
That's, yeah, let me describe that case type. Those wireless existing facility requests are really equipment swap-outs. So that's not increasing the height of a facility or a brand-new facility. It's really, and it's when they're upgrading to new technology or changing out the number of arrays that may be on a tower. Those are those requests. Those are pretty quick, simple processes for us. So, yeah, we have 18. It's not a huge workload for our team, and I would say our code does appear to be working pretty well, and we have not received a lot of new wireless applications. I think we received two last year of the new wireless facilities.
Yeah, I saw that too, the special review one. So I appreciate answering my questions. This is, I do appreciate the extra information you provided. It's very thought-provoking. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavales.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Rebecca. To build on what the commissioner was saying and reinforce, I think it would be useful to have like the average number, you talked about specific building permit residential. It would be helpful to know how these periods pertain to food producers, because we, you know, the agricultural component, I think that's what, in part, what Commissioner Shattuck McNally was talking about, because we often hear from folks, whether it's a farm stand or a pole barn or something, that it takes perhaps an inordinate amount of time. So I'm wondering if we can break these kinds of data points out as they pertain to ag producers, and also related to that, and maybe it was spoken to, it would be interesting to note if any, there's any variation based on geographic location. So, different parts of the county, are things going faster, slower? If so, what does that imply? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those suggestions. Those will be helpful as we determine what metrics to flesh out moving forward.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. Thanks for the information, and yeah, look forward to seeing what you decide to include in the future. I mean, I know there's always outliers, so there's always folks that, or reasons, you know, that may be beyond our ability. Maybe, you know, somebody didn't turn in the right paperwork, maybe it's not complete, maybe there's, you know, a variation that's, I mean, there's, there are sometimes that there are reasons that things don't happen quickly, and they're beyond our control. And so, you know, I think that this residential building permit number is great, but yeah, I mean, maybe you can help us sort of flesh out some numbers that would help us give some idea. We do hear that occasionally, I would say. I don't hear it often that there's something's held up, and then sometimes when we dig in, it's because of those reasons beyond our control. So, anyway, good luck with the new metrics, and this is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll keep moving on so we can stay on time.
All right, we'll move on to engineering.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Peterson, county engineer. We basically have three performance measures up here. The first one dealing with sort of road capacity or the condition of our roads from a traffic volume handling standpoint. Road and bridge, we'll talk about the paved and actual road surface condition when they go through their performance measures. So, looking at percentage of county roads providing free-flow capacity, that measure has stayed fairly constant. The goal is to actually have it higher. That goal was set relative to road conditions that existed a number of years ago when this measure was first set, so the fact that we're kind of below it isn't indicative of sort of a loss of capacity over time. One thing that will go into, that goes into calculation of this measure that will change fairly dramatically with the new transportation plan is the Highway Capacity Manual that goes into describing capacities of paved roads. They change the criteria fairly dramatically, and so our road capacities as being used in this latest version of the transportation plan are going to go up. And so when we go to recalculate that number next year, we'll have to footnote it because it will, I believe, increase fairly dramatically. And again, that's because they've given more capacity credit, given a fairly narrow, you know, two-lane road with no shoulders and nine-foot travel lanes has, by the Highway Capacity Manual, a fairly high traffic-carrying capacity. The middle performance indicator is trying to describe bridge condition on our major structures, so those are structures with a span of 20 feet or greater. We have over 200 of those structures. So we use, we're mimicking a CDOT performance indicator that is a percentage of the bridge deck area either falling in the good category or the poor category. The bridges are rated basically good, fair, or poor, so there's three ranges of rating. We're above those performance targets in both categories. We're at 52% roughly of our bridges in good condition for deck area and only 2%, 2.3% with poor condition. Again, that is just deck area, you know, so there's more that goes into inspection of bridges, substructure, superstructure, deck condition are all there and part of the measures that we're looking at. And we only have bridges, CDOT pays to and hires a consultant to inspect major structures every two years, so the performance measure is unchanged from 2023, and we're in the process now of having all of our bridges inspected this year, so we'll have new data at the end of the year. The last measure, last measure, excuse me, is severe crash rate on county roads. It's a measure related to 100 million vehicle miles of travel. The goal is to be below the line. The larger the gap, obviously, the better we have in terms of safety conditions on our roads. I would highlight the fact that we actually had zero fatalities on the unincorporated county road system in 2024. Unfortunately, our severe crash rate, and so severe crashes are crashes that result in injury or fatality, and it's an injury that basically requires medical response. Our severe crash rate is up about 17% from the prior year, and if you look at a five-year trend, it's gone up about 20%. So that's why that measure has gotten closer to the target line this last year. And we do, you know, create still an annual safety report. We're somewhat behind on it this year. Brian Fraken retired, so we're in the process of finishing up that report. We will be coming to you and giving you an update on all the things that we report on in that safety report in the near future.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments? Commissioner Kavales?
Yeah, thank you. Mark, thank you very much for your due diligence. Going back to the first slide on the left, did you say that the reason, or some of the reasons why we're we're below that goal of 88% was one reason, because we set that some time ago, and things have changed. Then the way we measure highway capacity or free flow of traffic, I guess, in the, in the transportation master plan, which we'll be approving and adopting, there are new metrics or new standards that will get us closer to that 88%. And then finally, perhaps the most substantive question would be, how does free flow of traffic relate to congestion?
So free flow of traffic, the way we're calculating is, what you're always talking about when you talk about capacity on a road is volume to capacity. So what's the volume of traffic on that road relative to the capacity of that road? So the, our prior transportation master plan, and this was based on data that was developed back in 2007, that we have and have been using to describe capacity on our road system. It's been used in the revisions to the master plans. So, for example, capacity on a mountain road, and I'm sort of pulling numbers off the top of my head, so don't hold me to them exactly. But capacity on a two lane mountain road might be somewhere around 5,000 vehicles a day. You get out on the plains, and it's a more open, level road, and capacity starts to approach 9,000 to 10,000 vehicles a day. The latest Highway Capacity Manual data would say that that mountain road might have still a capacity of 9,000 to 10,000 vehicles a day. So we've potentially given those roads credit for double the capacity, which I don't fully agree with. I mean, it doesn't feel totally right to me, but it is coming out of a national standard. So we did decide to utilize it. So it will indicate that some of our, our mountain roads, you know, now, instead of 5,000 vehicles a day, they've got the capacity to carry, you know, almost double that potentially.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful. I, I would submit that a road such as the Risk Canyon Road, if they were to bump that up to 9,000 vehicles per day, I would question that a little bit.
And, and the other thing I would say, and I probably didn't say this, is we compute volume to capacity of less than 0.5 is free flow. So if your volume on the road is less than 50% of the capacity of that road, you've got a free flow condition.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
No, I don't think I have any questions. I appreciate you expanding out on, especially that first percentage of the free flow and explaining that. I guess, I guess I do have a question. The severe crash rate on county roads, I know we have still a lot of issues with distracted driving and things like that, which is sometimes out of our control. Are you concerned this trend will stay kind of severe crash rate roads, that's rear crash rate of roads, even though we didn't have fatality, that's still trending upwards? Some of those things are, is there anything other than relieving congestion or looking for safety measures that we need to, that are in our control to maybe address that?
Well, I mean, certainly that's, you know, part of what has gone into the Safety Action Plan, is looking at things that can be done systemically. So, you know, can we, we've made a large effort to put curve warning signs out across the county to try to, because run off the road crashes are a high percentage of what we have. And if you have somebody run off the road, very often it's then a rollover on a county road. So you end up with severe crash or injury. So, you know, what we can do to try to prevent those kinds of crashes is part of the Safety Action Plan. What we can do in terms of even low cost measures, consideration can be given to widening, widening the striping on the edge lines, you know, go into six inch striping instead of four. Some of those things to help people stay on the road. Quite frankly, distracted driving is problematic everywhere, as is speeding. That's become a real problem across our system in both city, county, state.
Yeah. I appreciate, and thanks for reminding me. I do remember reading that in the Safety Action Plan. So thank you for the work, and I appreciate all that you are doing, especially at that one intersection I mentioned earlier to you, I think it's County Road 20, I can't remember. I just drive sometimes, and my normal Rats autopilot comes on. But thank you, Mark. I appreciate, and thanks for asking everyone for the work you do on this. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. So with the Highway Capacity Manual, with those standards changing, I mean, do you anticipate, I mean, that might have an effect on, I mean, crash rates? Because, you know, I'm thinking, so, I mean, what are the solutions to sort of increasing highway capacity would be increasing lanes. And sometimes in certain scenarios, that's not possible. So then, like, what, what's the other possibilities of sort of trying to divert traffic or, or use different roads? Or, I'm just thinking that, that those, you know, changing those numbers doesn't necessarily change the safety of those roads. Why do you think those numbers changed? I mean, I guess we don't have a lot of control over that. But, I mean, what's the thought process?
You know, they look at a number of factors. When they identify capacity, it's percent truck traffic, you know. I don't have all those in front of me, so I'm not going to be able to give you a detailed answer. They're really looking at vehicular capacity, and they didn't give much credit to adding shoulder width, which, again, I believe adds capacity, but it also improves safety and certainly accommodates other modes of travel on a rural road. So, you know, it, it is going into our master plan in terms of identifying the needs for capacity improvements. Those have sort of ratcheted back from what they might have been with, you know, capacity only being 5,000 on a road, and it's gone to nine. If you haven't tripped that 9,000 car threshold, you may not be identifying the need for wider shoulders like we were previously. So that's gone to maybe not identifying as many needs from a capacity standpoint as we had in our prior transportation plans. But we tried to offset that by looking at bike connectivity and making wider shoulders, identifying the need for wider shoulders on roads that tie into city bike networks. So, you know, we've, we've tried to look at it from all the different perspectives.
Still have the, still create that, I mean, still look to have wider shoulders, but from the point of view more of accommodating maybe bike traffic versus saying that that adds capacity to the roads.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's unfortunate. Do you think that that will affect dollars that would be available for, for shoulder widening? Or you think because making the case for maybe multimodal, you can, you can still get those dollars?
Yeah, most of the time, I think our, you know, our availability of getting additional funding for shoulder widening projects hasn't been about capacity for vehicles. It's been as much about other modes and the needs for.
Okay. Yeah, it's just a curious kind of thing that I don't know why that would, you know. It seems like we're trying to move towards, you know, zero deaths on roads and things like that. And to say these roads can handle even more traffic than previously thought, just feels like it's going in the wrong direction when it comes to, comes to that. But you don't make those, and I, and I know you're working hard to say, you know, yes, we still need to do this. And it's, it, it has a double benefit when we do.
And that is just a capacity standpoint. Again, safety is sort of a standalone factor that we're looking at as well.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, Mark. We'll move on to the next department, which is Natural Resources.
Well, good morning. Daylon Figs, Director for Natural Resources. And we have three metrics as well, like to chat about today. The first is a pavement metric, much, basically it lines with Road and Bridge. It's the Pavement Condition Index that we use within our PAVE system. We try to stay between 75 and 85. And so right now, we are basically unchanged from previous years at 82. And this really helps us direct maintenance dollars within our system, as this number dips down in individual parking lots. We're able to either pursue federal funds, much like we did with our, our large federal lands access program grant that's underway right now, or smaller funds. Because most of our PAVE system is within the Reservoir Park system. So the federal dollar is available for infrastructure, typically available to us. And so I will anticipate this number going up fairly dramatically in '25 because of that large federal grant that does bring some new asphalt parking lots into our system, but it also focuses on rehabilitating existing parking lots and bringing that score up. Our second metric is our land conservation metric. And so we have a goal of conserving a total of 74,000 acres by 2043. And 2043, if you remember, is when our existing help preserve open space sales tax expires. So starting from a baseline in 2018 of just a little over 50,000 acres, we've conserved, as of the end of 2024, an additional 7,663 acres, of which 70,000, or sorry, 70% of that is in fee title, about 30% in conservation easements. And in 2024, we conserved about 624 acres to that system. So the importance of the percentages are really twofold. One is, we anticipate by 2043, our land portfolio is going to be closer to a 50/50 mix of fee title and conservation easements. And that's really kind of based on, you know, the availability of land and how landowners want to conserve it, but also the internal cost of maintaining those lands. And the other reason I wanted to mention that is we're about, about 29% to 30% of the way of meeting the goal of 74,000 acres from our baseline of 50,000 acres in about 20% year into the timeframe that we have, the 25 year timeframe. So if you remember, we front loaded our land conservation dollars at the beginning of the sales tax. And I think these numbers reflect that that strategy is, is being successful. And then our last metric is around our natural surface trail system. We have a goal of basically a B or 75% or better within that system. And this allows us to really reflect, sort of respond to trail conditions on an annual basis. So if you remember, in 2023, we had a very wet year, and we suffered a lot of trail damage, and our score dropped to about 63%. This enabled us to pursue some grants, to move some internal dollars around, expand the size of our trail crew, and catch back up in 2024 where we're back at 80% again. And so the metrics are great to report on, but they're also great for us to respond with kind of how we sort of staff our crews, in this case, our trail crew, and bring extra dollars in to bear. So those are our metrics, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Daylon, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway for the public's question. 74,000 acres was a goal, but that, was that set based on kind of that master plan of, of areas that we were high value conservation areas? And if we do go to 50/50, that's by 2024, that would suggest that more of this would be land conservation efforts? Or will there still be opportunities for fee or land purchases?
So a couple pieces of that. One is the 74,000 acres, and I should have mentioned this, my apologies, is an acre conserved per capita. And so it really reflects our growing population in Laramie County, looking at our base population in, in 2018, expanding that to 2043, and then the per capita of that. And you are correct, our location of land conservation in the county is driven through our, our master plan. And so there are priority areas that we focus on. But we do conserve land outside of, of those footprints as well. And so we will conserve land most anywhere in the county, but they're our priority areas. We will redo our master plan, beginning toward the end of this year, and reconsider where we conserve lands within the county. And so that all is really a kind of a continuous improvement process where we look at other opportunities for land conservation. In terms of the, the mix, a lot of that's driven by landowner desire. So a lot of times, and really the cost of conserving land in the county. So if it's an area where increased recreational access may not be needed. So, for example, if we go to Red Feather Lakes, that would be a very difficult location in the county for us to pick up a property for additional, for public access because of its distance from our existing ones. We may lean more toward a conservation easement in that scenario. And oftentimes, the landowners prefer to start with conservation easement as well. The 50/50 mix is really an anticipated outcome, but we're, we're not trying to drive that decision. You know, when we have discussions with landowners, we really go with what they want. But that's just kind of our internal thoughts that will likely end up more in that 50/50 mix. But things change. It's, 2043 is another 20 years away.
Thank you for that, Madam Chair. Just want to add a clarifying question. Can, I know those, that number of 57, 57,663 was the end of 2024. Can you remind me of the fantastic number we've done conservation wise for the last, the first, at least, I know it's probably even changed, but was what, 5,000 the first four months or so? What are we at now?
So right now, as you recall, we had some fairly large properties close, conservation easements at the end of '24. So currently, we are at 62,141 acres conserved.
Thank you. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kafalas, any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, thanks. Thank you, Daylon. First of all, appreciation for all the good work, and certainly for the hike we were able to take the other day. I'm wondering, and maybe this applies to everyone, are you thinking of other types of metrics to, you know, in terms of conservation, in terms of recreation areas, given that we will be taking on, you know, within the next five to 10 years, glade reservoir recreation, chimney hollow reservation, recreation, are we looking at other types of metrics or standards, performance standards, that might help inform how do we adapt to changing times?
That's, that's a great question, and thank you. You know, one of the, the surveys we began about three years ago is called Rate Your Day, and it really is sort of a, you know, one to five sort of rating. And the reason we've not converted that to a metric to date is we're not sure if we're going to continue it. And it's not because it's not great information. The writing information is invaluable. It's really the public's willingness to continue to, to take the survey when they get to the trailhead. So we're a little hesitant to rely on that. But I do think there are metrics on water based recreation. We track all sorts of things on number of boats launched and paddle boards and things of that nature. And again, making that a metric, it's really more reflective of what happens. We're really not driving or trying to make management decisions around it. It's more reactionary. So I, I think that we may come up with metrics, but I'm just not sure what they would be right now, that we would, that we would use to sort of drive those decisions.
I certainly appreciate that. And I think what, I guess what I'm getting at is more of the community based types of metrics that we don't always have entire control over. But it would be helpful when we have these conversations, in my view, you know, to have more information about that, even though it's not considered part of what we have total control over regarding these internal metrics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for these metrics. It's really great. And always happy to have that reminder of how many lands we intend to conserve. And maybe we've heard it before, but the 50/50 mix is interesting. And it seems to make sense from a, you know, sort of perspective of how do we take care of all these properties, right? And especially as John said, you know, we're, we're bringing on new recreational opportunities for folks. Yeah, I guess, just looking forward to seeing kind of the metrics around the reservoirs too. You know, I think that, that would be sort of interesting to, to figure out what metrics would be good to, to, to talk about those, because they, they require a lot of maintenance and work from your team. And so, you know, how are we, are we, are we doing that? I think we are doing that well. But as you see, like, expanded, you know, people being more and more interested in being out on the water, you know, what does that look like for you? And how, how are you able to manage that? And what kind of numbers are you seeing? That would be, I think, really valuable for us to know.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have Road and Bridge, right? Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. So, that's right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Hirsch, Assistant Road and Bridge Director. And I have with me-
And I have with me Brian Eckert, our accounting, our accounting manager. So, our metrics have not changed this year. We've held these KPIs for a few, few years now. After much discussion internally, we continue to land here. These seem to be the best measurements overarchingly of what we do. So, we start on the left there, our average condition of our paved roads system. We have a goal of between seventy-five and eighty-five PCI. PCI has been mentioned a few times. Mark and Daylon have both mentioned that, Pavement Condition Index. We continue to trend high. That's a, a trend that we are paying attention to, monitoring. We've actually made some decisions this past year to change our chip seal program. What's interesting about this score is that when you ask any of us, and I think engineering included here, we, we don't feel that we are overspending on our paved road system. We know there's a lot of work out there yet, a lot of need out there yet. That being said, we're very proud of our paved road system. So, we do not want to knee-jerk based on that PCI. The change that I mentioned with our, our chip seal program, we had previously been chip sealing our roads every seven years. We've changed that to nine years, starting this, this, this summer. This year's program is a, an abbreviated program compared to the, the seven-year schedule. And in consolidating those, those years, if you will, those, those program years, we expect to see some results of that probably within the, the next four to five years. So, again, we're, we're cautious of knee-jerking, trying to pull that score down, if you will. And we also feel that the seventy-five to eighty-five is, is where it needs to be. Logically, that makes sense. I think that it is a testament to the decisions that we're making on the roads. As you know, we're in lockstep with the engineering department when it comes to quite a few of these decisions, our overlay program, what have you. And again, we, we really feel that we're in the right place, that we're, we're getting the best value we can for the, for the money that we're spending on that, on that system. That system is comprised of three hundred and eighty miles of, of road, and holds a value, an estimated value, I believe, between two hundred and twenty and two hundred and seventy million dollars. So, we obviously don't want to fall below seventy-five and, and get towards the, the critical PCI. We want to stay above that. And, and again, not to continue to bang the drum, I think we're, we're making good decisions, and, and our paved road system shows that. The middle graph is our non-paved road condition. We have a goal between eighty and ninety. And this is a somewhat odd, the PCI is the best way that we have found to measure that to date. That being said, we're, we're going to make a change, and I'll, I'll speak to that in a moment. But non-paved roads are a little bit harder to, to, I'll say, catch in a, in a normal state, if you will. So, these numbers are a snapshot glance, just a, a moment-in-time glance at our paved road system. Those inspections are done every summer. And, you know, it really depends on the timing of the inspection. Did we just grade the road? Did we just receive a, a horrible rain in that area, what have you? So, that can fluctuate. That being said, we are, are happy with the system, and again, happy with the decisions that we're making. You can, you can, if you drive our non-paved road system and compare it to all of our neighbors, I think that you would find Laramie County has, has a non-paved road system to be, to be proud of. The swing in two thousand and twenty-four, from eighty-nine down to eighty, we're not overly concerned with that, again, because of the snapshot in time, the same as we weren't jumping for joy or celebrating the, the move from eighty-three to eighty-nine the year prior. So, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we are changing our methodology of measuring the condition of our non-paved road system. We're going for, away from the paved roads condition index, or the, the pavement condition index, and moving to the International Roughness Index, IRI. This is something that we've trialed over the last few years. And it is a, again, internationally-known index. And it's base, is very basic. So, the, the PCIs on non-paved roads measure seven distresses on those non-paved roads, which unfortunately can be somewhat subjective, can, eye-of-the-beholder situation. So, the IRI is just based on the roughness of the road. It really is just the, the drivability and the ride quality of the road. So, we expect to transition to that, that measurement over the coming year. And our KPIs for two thousand and twenty-six will, will look different in that, different in that realm. The third graph is snow and ice-related accidents, per snow day, per million vehicle miles traveled. This is the, the best metric that we can find that adequately measures how we're performing snow and ice removal or, or control, without, again, with, without us having any direct arbitrary influence over that. As you can see, we've, we've fallen quite a bit. That is great. That is, that is really good news. Although this metric does measure, again, per snow day, I think it is worth mentioning, and something that we, we speak about internally, the, the winter seasons of two thousand and twenty-four were very mild. You know, last fall, we didn't even schedule snow removal crews down here in the urban corridor until late December, very mild winters, over the last two years. So, we're, we're cautiously optimistic about that. We understand that, that, that probably has something to do with that number. While it does factor in number of snow days, it doesn't factor in the, the timing of the storm, whether it was overnight, whether it was during a rush hour, what have you. So, again, these are, these are the three that we feel most adequately, just to look at everything overall, the rubber, where the rubber meets the road, if you will. And yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Justin. John, please go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, Justin. I have two questions. One pertaining to the middle, the middle graph there, non-paved county roads. You, you referenced drivability, rideability, and I think that may pertain to the, the new IRI that we'll be using?
Correct.
My question related to that is this. When you look at that, is it at all dependent on the type of vehicle that you might be driving on that road? Because if I were to drive my Prius versus somebody who has a high clearance, alter, you know, a, a car better suited for that, those types of roads, how do you take into consideration the type of vehicle?
That's, that's a really good question. And in some of the trials that we, the trial that we have done, we, we actually use mobile devices. There's a few companies out there that, they use the accelerometer in a, in a, a mobile device. You mount it to a vehicle, and it, it measures the, the roughness, if you will, of the road. And there's some factoring that is done per the vehicle type. So, it is weighted or smoothed, maybe is a better way to, to, to put that, to accommodate for the, the suspension of a vehicle.
Thank you. Just one more question, please. I'm going to play a bit of the devil's advocate, and this may be more of a Leslie question. But for the, the person, the people that we represent, looking at these graphs, average condition of paved county roads, we're doing pretty good. Average condition of non-paved county roads, we're doing pretty good. Why do we need extra money to do some of this work?
That's a very good question. I think that, and, and it's somewhat a double-edged sword. The difference here, if, if, if I may say, is this is strictly maintenance. This is maintaining the system that we have today. We, we know that we are headed towards some, some capital shortcomings, capital funding shortcomings. And therein is the difference. You know, Mark spoke earlier about capacity, and we all know what's happening here in Laramie, in Laramie County and, and this region. We understand that, that our roads are not going to be able to, to carry the traffic that will be required of them. So, I think that's a, that's where the line is, for sure, maintenance versus what is going to be needed in, in the near future.
Thank you very much. I, I anticipated that, that type of answer. And I, I just think, depending on what decision we make next month, the Commissioners, we want to be very mindful of how we message things. And, and this, you know, the perception could be, well, you guys got it all covered. Why do we need to, you know, consider a sales tax? Did you want to add something?
Yeah, that was, Justin had a, an accurate, very good answer for that, too. And just as a reminder, we currently have about approximately seven million a year that is allocated for capital projects. And so, that's where the real need is. As you heard from Justin, too, I think engineering and road and bridge both have, you know, continued to look at these numbers and see if we can adjust and allocate more money over on the capital side. And so, depending on what happens this fall, we'll, we'll continue to have that discussion. But yeah, the real need is on the capital side, meaning to be able to improve and build new roads, or, or new system, new infrastructure for the growing needs of the community. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you all for this. This is really important to talk about because it's one thing we, it's for safety, but also just, that's where people kind of, sometimes we get our biggest complaints because road's not plowed, or how rough it is, or not rough it is. I have a couple of questions. The average conditions of paved road, paved road, you do such a great job, and the, and the measure is really high. Because we do a good job maintenancing those roads, that seems to help keep our conditions of those roads. And I know you have done a lot of widening and repaving recently. I've benefited from that with my running and trying to get out and not have to walk in the ditch, you know, to avoid traffic. So, I'm wondering, is that help because you guys do such a great job maintenancing them every year? Does that help kind of keep the condition in the long term at a high level?
Absolutely. And that's, that's the crux of, of, of that goal. We understand that if that PCI falls off to a certain point, we are going to struggle to get those scores back up. It's a downward spiral. The critical PCIs, sixty-five to seventy, seventy-five, in that, in that range, once you, if you are not able to take the steps necessary to, to get that pavement back into a, a higher condition, you will chase it. It's, it's a problem that a lot of local entities have, because they're not able to fund the reconstruction. So, they continue to throw maintenance mandates at that, at that pavement. And it, it really is, it's, it's not overcomeable. So, we are, I dare say, scared of that. We really understand we don't want to fall below certain PCIs, or the critical PCI on certain roads. So, we struggle mightily to stay above that.
Thank you. My last question, and again, great work. I know all of you, great work, great information. I appreciate you all being here today. And the work that you do on a daily basis is so important. This is things that impact everyone's daily life. The non-paved county roads, I spent some time driving around some of those this past weekend. And I'm curious, I'm sure that this rating, there's a couple of roads that really are struggling right now. We've kind of learned about some of them that maybe bring that down versus other roads that seem to be, because I have driven on that northwest corner, coming into Wyoming and up in, around Waha and some of that wilderness area. And I was so impressed how, how nice the roads were up there. And I do that sometimes. I just wanderily roam around the county just to see how things look, which I guess makes me either, I need more things to do. But it just, sometimes it's nice just to go and see what things look like. So, I'm wondering about that, you know, there's maybe a few roads that are pulling that down, because it seemed like I've seen some roads that are really remote areas that are fantastic, because it may, because they don't get a lot of traffic, but they're in great shape. I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, we, we do have some known roads. There's, you know, on the, on the paved road system, we have some, some hot topic roads, if you will, we're, we're very concerned about. We feel they should be capital projects due to the capital funding issues. We are not able to move on them as, as we'd like. And, and no doubt, those are pulling scores down. What we're worried about is that they are at the critical, critical point where we understand that we, we cannot throw those Band-Aids, if you will, at them and, and gain much. And that those roads are in, in need of reconstruction. They've held decent scores until now. So, we are starting to see, and I'm speaking of, you know, portions of County Road Seventy, the Alkianian Road, Douglas Road, just north of Fort Collins. We know they are going to come apart. They are deteriorating rapidly now. So, without doubt, we have roads that are, are, are pulling, pulling the scores down, or vice versa. You know, this, again, snapshot in time. Regardless of paved road or non-paved road, every road is in a state of deterioration from day one. So, depending on when, when we scored the road, when it was assessed, we could, we could have the other, other way as well, where roads are, are, are holding the score up. And that is, you, you mentioned the Laramie River Road. That's a, a good example. That's actually a non, a, a surface, I'm sorry, a native surface road. So, it does not have any gravel on it. And our crews do a very good job of keeping it in, in decent condition, decent condition. Now, if that road was a little bit closer to the front range and had higher traffic levels, the scores would be quite low on that road. So, it, it benefits from low traffic levels.
Thank you for explaining that. And that's a great point. There's some that are really good condition that are pulling it up, too. So, I appreciate your, your insights. Thank you.
Just, so with, with changing the chip seal program to every nine years, you expect those numbers to go down a little bit on the county roads, but not enough to where you are thinking you can't kind of keep them in that range? Is that, is that right?
Correct. Yeah, we, we have, over the years, and we're very proud of our chip seal program. We, we put a lot of effort and just thought overall into it, especially compared with other entities around. And what we've noticed over the last few years, the last decade, is that we are getting more out of our chip seals than we used to. And this was a, a large step for us to take. I think if you, if you search, if you research nationally, I think the, the, the number's going to be on six to seven years for the life of a chip seal. We, we understand that we're doing better than that, that we're getting better life than that out of the road. So, we feel this is going to, to help save us in the long run and keep, keep the roads where they need to be without falling and needing to catch up on the chip seal.
Great. Well, that's good news. And then, just one question around the snow removal or the, the snow and ice-related accidents. So, I know at one point, we had sort of changed how we staffed that, or, or the, the scheduling. Do you attribute any of the, the lowering in accidents to the fact that we kind of changed the way we, or the, the hours of the day? the day where we are plowing? Is that is there something to?
That's a very excellent point. I I glossed over that. Um, we do attribute that to the decisions that we've been making there. Um, we have really been emphasizing preseason training with our employees as well as post hire. Um, so during the summer, if we hire employees, we are um performing snow removal training um immediately, trying to immerse our folks in 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 that mindset. The hours of service change was huge. Uh, that shifting change, while it it gave our folks shorter shifts, it allows us to be on the on the roads um longer. Our our hours of service to the community are um a lot longer than they were. So we are out through both rush hours, um, out from early morning into late evening, and and we do think that has a lot to do with the the trending uh downward accidents.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad that that's working. That's that was great because I remember when we um and you probably had told us about the chip seal lasting longer in the past, but sometimes we forget things as we move forward. So thank you for reminding us of of why we've gone to every nine years. Um, it's great information. So I I do agree that these are good metrics. Be interesting to see um how using that I R I um that index changes, um, if that changes those numbers at all. I don't, you know, I don't know, but um certainly that's kind of what people's concern is when they're on non-paved roads is is it so bumpy that it can't go as
Exactly.
fast as the speed limit says I can, you know, or something like that. So it'll be interesting to see that. All right. Well, wonderful. We'll keep moving along then. Um, thank you, Justin and Brian for being here. Appreciate it. Um, so we'll move to solid waste.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dwayne Penny, and I'm the Director of Solid Waste. And the met we have four uh matrix that we'll be talking about today. Um, I'll start off with the percentage of municipal solid waste deposited at the landfill. Um, we track that material because that's degradable um material, and we use those numbers to calculate our air emissions and report to the state on an annual basis. It's a fairly complex calculation that the state and EPA use to monitor emissions, very important. Um, and we really pay attention to those um matrix. Something really interesting about it, and I'll talk about as we move to the next one, and it will tie back into this one. Um, the second one, which is the middle, the tons of waste entering the landfill. Um, last year we were right at three hundred and twenty thousand tons, and in our system, we track the different types of waste material, and we we track it by vehicle, by material type, and certainly by volume. And we have both by cubic yard and by ton. And those are really important numbers to us that also we report to the state. And those numbers are the important numbers for our solid waste infrastructure master plan, which we are um working on, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. That master plan um has five facilities that um are really tied to the volume that comes in annually. And so right now, um, solid waste is in construction of two facilities, a new landfill, the north landfill, and a diversion and transfer station located at the Lerner County landfill. Both those facilities are anticipated to be in operation by July one of twenty twenty-six. The reason that the other facilities, and there's three of them, were added into the solid waste infrastructure master plan, it's a C and D processing facility, a compost facility, and a food waste process facility. And the reason those facilities are so important, when you look at the total number of three hundred and twenty thousand tons, we break that down into the different categories. So if we take and build a C and D facility, we can increase our diversion up to thirty-five or forty percent just by getting the um C and D materials out of the out of the waste stream. If we build a compost facility and tie it in with a food waste processing facility, which really hits the organics portion of the food waste art, that can take us up to close to eighty percent of um diversion from the landfill. That is our goal, and our municipal partners are striving for zero waste, and um we're supportive of that, but we are looking at it incrementally. And right now, we're we're our goal is uh forty percent diversion by twenty thirty. And that's still a a fairly large goal to achieve. It it aligns us with the state of Colorado's goals. And uh, one of the things that we're working really hard on with our new transfer station, it's going to give us more opportunities um to build a C and D facility and and really start to impact those diversion numbers by getting some of those materials recycled and reused. So the uh, I probably should stop and see if there's any questions on that. I'm going to switch gears and start talking about household hazardous waste.
You go ahead, Commissioner, then.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Dwayne. Uh, just a comment, and if you care to respond. So last night, I think it was last night, I was watching PBS News Hour, and there was a bit of a story on plastic recycling. And um, a key takeaway from the story was that um, we know that China stopped accepting plastic material, and now apparently a lot of our uh plastic waste was going to Malaysia, and they're stopping um receiving of this material. And I think uh they mentioned that of all the plastic, ninety-three percent goes into landfills and maybe seven percent is recycled. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, that's a I will comment on that because there's some good stuff going on, I think, that I should talk about. So next year, the state of Colorado is going to start a program called the Extended Producer Responsibility. And the reason that is relevant to your question, Commissioner, is um a a legislation was passed, and it is now starting to be driven uh to create a circular economy in Colorado. And a part of that, the Extended Producer Responsibility is going to hold manufacturers of packaging um materials, they're going to start holding them responsible for paying for the recycling of those materials. And so their 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 manufacturers are going to be much more um in line with what products they're using for recycling since they're going to be responsible for the recycling. So that's going to be a big change that I'm looking forward to, um, because we we all live under the plastics one through seven, and a lot of folks say, hey, is is plastic going into the landfill? A lot of it is, but there's a lot of plastics in in Colorado that are going to recycling, and that is plastics number one and two are the big ones. Um, you know, four and five have markets, but three, six, and seven do not. And so it's we really need to work on that. So I'm excited about the EPR program. Um, the household hazardous waste, that's really an exciting um citing exciting facility to share. We have about twenty thousand visitors a year, and um at HHW, we accept a lot of hazardous waste, batteries, um, light bulbs, things that that people use, paint, used oil. And so we have some really good programs to handle that material. We have a paint program that we share with the state where m- uh paint materials can go back into the um program, and it gets recycled. At our facility, we have what's what is called a swap and drop. And so thirty-one percent of the four hundred and seventy-six tons that comes to the facility goes back to residents, and they get to use those materials. That's a big number. Um, so we're we're really excited about that. That's a hundred and forty-seven tons that goes back into the community, and we do not pay for for disposal, and so we can focus on other programs. And and a part of that, we're starting to see the vape vape equipment is really starting to take off. Um, and there's a lot of lot of challenges with vape equipment. Number one, it has batteries in it, and the batteries are built into the vape equipment, so you can't pull them out and recycle them. They they can also uh cause a fire hazard in the landfill. And then some of the materials are considered toxic, and so we have to handle them a certain way, which drives the hazardous waste regulations to kick in. So although we are working with um our residents, um, something that is really important that helped us this year, which I'd like to share, is the state passed the Extended Producer Responsibility Act for Batteries. And so as that program comes together, we're going to start to get some more um legislation driving how those materials are handled, and also batteries, which um, you know, we prior to uh two years ago, we were spending about eight to nine thousand a year in battery recycling. Um, and before that, battery recycling was free. And so the reason it started to um cost us more money to recycle batteries is number one, we're recycling a lot more. We also have a battery campaign that we initiated in twenty twenty-two to help stop fires in the landfill, and and that has helped considerably with residents. Our next our next challenge is um commercial battery disposal, a lot of power tools, batteries, and lawnmower uh batteries. When you hit it with the equipment, with those batteries still in there, they catch on fire. And so we've had some really interesting fires that it would be nice if we didn't have those fires. And if we can get the batteries out, then that's going to help a lot.
Thank you. Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thanks, Dwayne, for bringing up the batteries. Um, I really enjoyed hanging out with Linda, the hazardous waste manager, I guess, or
Yes, yes.
Yeah, um, with the county almost thirty years, just an amazing individual and such a great program. Um, always enjoy visiting with her. Um, one thing I've I wanted to note was, um, we talked about the vaping um batteries inside, but also are all these electric toothbrushes. All of us probably have electric toothbrush, and I was glad you confirmed that we can bring in those electric toothbrushes that are dying or broken, and they can be recycled with the batteries, because those would cause fires if they people threw them in the trash. So
Yes.
I was really surprised to hear that. And so I was wondering, um, you're continuing on the spending and and educating. Will you be expanding to talk about vaping materials and electric toothbrushes and what what else can be recycled with batteries in them to reduce those fires?
Yes, we will. Um, one of the reasons that we we want to continue to expand the battery campaign is we find more um power tools and home uh devices are, you know, be becoming battery powered. I mean, just about everything's battery powered. And so it's important that we help find it just the proper disposal, or preferably recycling for those materials. And so, yes, we will be expanding that and including those materials in our um battery campaign.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, well, thank you, Dwayne. Thanks for presenting these numbers. Um, certainly really uh want to applaud your efforts to divert uh waste out of the um landfill. I know that we've been working hard on that, and I know it's it's complicated, and it's complicated to see what can be recycled and where there's markets. And so I just um know that that you are really passionate about doing that. Um, having worked in the solid waste industry for many years of your life, you know, I think that that um, you know, your legacy could be really helping us here um with uh how to recycle these hard-to-recycle um materials. And so I appreciate all the work that you and your team have done to make that happen and pursuing grants and that to that end. And so um, we are doing a lot of great work, and we're trying to take our time to do it right. And so I would just want the community to know that, too, that we are working with our municipal partners on this, and that um this has been a long process, but you know, I think we're I think we're getting it right here, and um I think that the numbers will start to show that as well. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our last item, which is the ranch.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Connor McGrath, Director of the Ranch. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the Ranch performance metrics this morning. Um, I would like to request, as as we're talking about the measures, think about one of the overarching goals of self-sustainability um for the ranch. It helps us um put the put the numbers into perspective. So the first metrics on your left and percentage of operating expenses covered by revenue. Um, and I should mention, we're also working with Julie's team, like Rebecca mentioned earlier, to change some of our metrics for twenty twenty-six. Um, so this will likely be the the last um this year, will likely be the last year that we'll use these metrics. Um, you can see we had seventy-eight percent um of our expenses covered by um the fee for service or fees that we charge for uh facility rental, tickets, et cetera. That's up two percent over twenty twenty-three, um significantly down since twenty twenty. Um, as a reminder, twenty twenty was skewed due to COVID and FEMA using the property as as a as a um hospital. We we will continue to see that number hover around um the seventy-eight, eighty percent in twenty twenty-five. Um, as you recall, we are bringing more and more services in-house to become more self-sustaining. So we we stood up a new um grounds crew. Um, so we need to hire staff, purchase the equipment, and we'll start to see a net reduction in expense um in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-six. We um the I'll I'll continue to go with measures that we have control over and then come back to our community uh metrics. Uh, facility utilization, on the left-hand side, you'll see, and this is the middle um on the lower, you'll see equine, and on the right-hand side, um exhibitions and meetings. We did not report correctly on twenty twenty-two. I'm leaving it in there since it's the metric that we used. Um, we shifted per um software programs in twenty twenty. We were double counting uh um utilization in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. We corrected that for twenty-three, and you can see we're at a thirty percent utilization, and twenty-four um a forty-one percent utilization. This is one of the metrics that we'll be changing, because being quiet or being busy really doesn't reflect whether we are um marching towards the goal of self-sustainability. Some of the um events that make up the forty-one percent of utilization in the um equine space, that could represent a Saturday-only barrel race, or it could represent a ten-day, twenty-four hours a day um cutting show. And and we are starting to see more and more of those events. I think we have six events on our calendar for twenty twenty-five that are twenty-four-hour um per day horse show events that run for a minimum of um seven to ten days. Exhibitions and meeting, we're at eighty-seven percent with a goal of sixty-five. We have discussed through many of the master plan meetings, um, there the the percentage of business that we're turning away is relatively high compared to the business that we're serving and the need for more space in the in the expo and convention centers. Um, so we're 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 pleased with with that goal and still working towards the goal of um fifty-five percent within the equine space now that we have the added warm-up that we completed uh in the Ranch Equestrian Center during Phase One of the master plan. You'll see a significant increase to three point eight million dollars in sponsorship, and that's both cash and in-kind. You may recall, we book, for accounting purposes, we book in-kind or trade at seventy-five percent of its actual value. So we're sitting at three point eight million and also happy to announce today, um, probably the first time publicly, that we have secured a new naming rights partner for the building, the 4H Youth and Community Arena that was built during Phase One, um, and we will be publicly announcing that um tomorrow to the community. One of the things we've also focused on and within the sponsorship revenue area um is long-term agreements. Our goal internally is to be at an eighty percent achievement goal by January one. So in lay terms, as of January one, eighty percent of our budget is already um accounted for through prior year, our multi-year agreements. And then the last metric in the middle upper, uh, number of community events for twenty twenty-four, we were hovering around um eight hundred and forty. That obviously is a metric that we are not um directly in control of, but happy to support the community, both in the 4H Youth and Community Arena and the Thomas McKee Facility for their 4H meetings, you their youth meetings, general community nonprofit meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Questions? Commissioner Follis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks. Thanks, Connor. Uh, I think you've touched on this, but I wonder if you could expand your comments regarding community events. You you gave a few examples of the types of community events. Could you expand on that a little bit, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you for your question, Commissioner. Um, it it's across the board. We 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 see it from I mentioned 4H, 4H is priority use of the of the facility. We, we see it from, I mentioned 4H. 4H is priority use of the, of the facility. And then, secondary use falls to community groups that are registered 501(c)(3) through (c)(9) nonprofit. So, we see foundations having their monthly meetings there. We see FFA groups meeting. We'll see some nonprofits that are focused on sports. We have a monthly roller derby nonprofit that uses the space for competitions and practice. It really is across the board with the value that the space brings to the community, having the flexibility of having a flat-floor concrete space, which then meets and checks the box for something like roller derby, to having the ability to have a intimate 10, 20-person meeting for a foundation or a nonprofit or community organization. It really, it really speaks to the diversity that we see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shannon McNally.
Thank you, Connor, and thank you for providing some of the context on the facility utilization rate and kind of that shift. So, I have a couple of questions. When you talked about, which is something I have been thinking and kind of talking about for, since I became a commissioner, was the need for more convention space and need for more space to meet in general. So, when you're saying you're turning away business or opportunities, do you see that trend continuing and that shift in our master plan, looking at how we can meet the needs for those, that, those folks looking for business, but also the opportunities to support the needs of the community in that way?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. I see the trend continuing, that we will turn away business until we build the new facility. At this point, we have received the feasibility study back from Convention Sports and Leisure that supports a footprint, a building footprint of 165,000 square feet. So, for perspective, we have 38,000 square feet in the Peterson Toyota Center. The blue arena with the bleachers retracted is 31,000 square feet. So, 31 in blue, 38 in Peterson. And the feasibility study is coming back as very feasible for 165,000 square-foot flat-floor expo. And that's supporting services, kitchens, restrooms, breakout space. So, it will be around 100,000 square-foot flat-floor expo space, and then the supporting would make up the other 65,000. So, until then, I see the, the trend continuing.
Thank you. I was thinking about this last weekend, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, when Commissioner Stevens and I attended National Association of Counties Conference in Philadelphia, which was a massive, massive convention space. It was quick, it was easy to get lost, but it also was a nice, great space with air conditioning, because when I stepped outside, it took me a half hour to stop sweating, even if I was just outside briefly. But it was also very, so big that I think our conference was almost, it, it, we didn't use all the space, for sure, but it certainly was user-friendly, and it was helpful to how they had people navigate. So, my question with that, and the horse cutting thing, I can, my family participates in that, so I know how that looks like, though not right, right now, since they fell off and broke their shoulder. But do you see those trends, too, with that kind of competition in this region? Because I see some changes happening to the north in Cheyenne, and we see some other changes in Denver. Do you see that need kind of increasing here locally as other facilities around us are changing with that cutting and, and other equine-related competitions?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. My, my answer is going to be a little across the board. Justin mentioned earlier, milder winters. That's something that is changing the, the equine space in general, where most people didn't look to Colorado, thinking from the months of October, November, through March, April. With the milder winters and not having as many snow events, especially in the front, front range, obviously, in the mountains, it's a little different. We are seeing more interest from Utah, Texas, Oklahoma, Nebraska, both the Dakotas, where people are traveling in, into shows that are hosted here. We secured 16 new shows last year in the equine space. There's also a concern of inner-city properties, where people are concerned with crime rates, where they're not concerned with that at the ranch. And especially when you've got a horse that could be a quarter-million-dollar horse inside a horse trailer, and, and a hauling rig that could be a million dollars' worth of equipment. Not to say that there's no, there's no crime in and around the ranch. It's not as prevalent as it is in some of our urban areas. Those are factors that are driving the, driving the increase. The other difference being that we're not a key facility, meaning you can go to other quote-unquote fairgrounds, pick up your key, and you're handed the facility, and you work the facility. We're definitely a white-glove service, where we're taking care of you from pre-planning to marketing your event, to getting your event successfully off the ground, to operationalizing the event. And we're working the dirt, not you. It's our equipment, and we're working the facility the entire time. We don't have a lot of competitors in that space in, in Colorado. So, I think the level of service plus milder winters, plus, the more shows you get, the more word of mouth is out there for folks to come and try. So, I think the trend will continue to increase towards that goal of a higher utilization in the, in the Ranch Equestrian Center.
Thank you, Connor. Excellent work, and I appreciate all the changes you've made. And I think we have fantastic facility. I spent over 45 minutes explaining to a large group of Lovelanders over the weekend about all the things the county did, actually, most of the things you guys are doing. I had a stack of papers, and I was explaining to everyone, and it just blew their minds. They had no idea. It's like a Laramie County 101, and I tried to do it an hour and a half. I couldn't do it all. But, but the ranch, I had no idea. So, I need to go get another stack of the annual reports, because they all, all my little stacks, they took everything. But I have a couple of questions, but I'll put them offline, since we're almost out of time. But I might just ask questions offline about the sponsorship revenue. The cash and kind, expand on that a little bit later. But I'll, maybe I'll just email you and, and ask you those later. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it looks like we are about out of time. Just want to say thank you, Connor, for bringing forward all these numbers. We know that you're working towards the self-sufficiency, and we know a lot of that can't happen without some of the remodels and the re-envisioning that you're doing at the ranch. And so, we're, we're excited about Phase 2. We're excited about, you know, the possibility for those, you know, buildings that will really address some of the needs that we have in our community and, and across the state. I'm really excited to see that those sponsorship revenues have gone up. I know that that's something that you're, that you've worked really hard on, and I appreciate that, and it's exciting to hear. I'll be excited to hear tomorrow about who will be sponsoring that 4H building. Yeah, I think, I had a question about, a little bit about kind of community events. And maybe just briefly, are these, do we charge for any of those? Or that is, when you're talking about community events, that is space that we're giving to the community? Or is there sometimes a small charge?
There, there is no charge for community events to use the event if they use it within the parameters of the agreement. So, community events can use the space, meeting rooms twice a month without cost, and the halls once a month without cost. And if they exceed that, then we charge for direct expense only, per our agreement with the McKee Charitable Trust.
Thank you. Well, I just, I love the idea that we're able to provide community space and be able to bring in revenue and great shows. And the quality of shows, I think, has improved as the sponsorship revenue has increased. And so, you know, I think everything, all these numbers seem to be trending in the right direction. So, I appreciate you bringing those forward. And yeah, thank you. Lauren, do any closing words for us?
Yeah, I think I'll just say, this is one of those service areas that most directly serves the public, the way that we move around our community, the way that we recreate and go to events, the way that we plan and develop what our community looks like, and the way that we dispose of our waste. I mean, I think these are the things that where the rubber meets the road, as, as Justin said. And I hope that what you heard and what folks listening might hear is that these folks are really good stewards of resources. They stretch a dollar so far. I think Commissioner Kofalas asked a really great question in the transportation discussion. If we're so high on maintenance, why do we need additional funds? And I think the takeaway, I hope, is if we get the additional funds and we are able to expand capacity, we will take good care of those roads as well, because that's what we do as a community, is we stretch that dollar and take care of the things that we have. Looking at this building, this is not a new building. It's more than 20 years old, and it is in amazing condition. And that is just how the county operates. So, thank you all for what you do and for the opportunity to look at your metrics. I know Julie will be working with each of you to see if you want new metrics. Many of you have talked about that already, but you do great work, and I think it's really valued by the community.
Thank you, Lauren. I appreciate that. And in addition to capacity on those roads, why we might need more dollars, is all the safety features that we've identified throughout the county that we really need to keep our roads safe as well. And I don't know that that was mentioned, but that's an important piece of those dollars as well. So, with that, we're almost on time. It's 11:33, and we're adjourned. Thank you. And thank you to Julie for your work.